...to be in compliance ourselves. And visiting some of our city properties, we are not in compliance. And so we're meeting with Alex, I'm sorry, Alex, last name? Try me again. Uh, there's a part to talk about getting the city's properties in compliance and going through our easements and things like that. And then we're gonna send out a letter in the Land Use Bills. I mean, we want to let the electric companies know that we can use their bills and go to tell people they're going to be cleaning, these are what we're looking for. But I'm putting together a form and when Monica comes to you again, if you can give us until next month, we should be able to say that we are actually in compliance and we're prepared to go out and do a co-enforcement program. And that, that's gonna be her focus. And you're right, Council, she's been pulled in several different directions. And so we want to be able to focus her on that type of activity.
But your job is to defend the employee. You know, Mr. Gonzalez comes and he don't know, but he's, he's talking to Monica, so Monica telling him, "We don't have the time over this." Whatever explained. The thing is, Monica should say, "Go ahead and speak to the city manager." But the city manager's got the whole authority to any kind of complaint because she runs the city. And, and, and like, you talk to her, if she fixes one of your problems, you have to come again, and I guess she'll tell you not to wait a month or whatever. But at the same time, I kind of defend the employee a little bit because, you know, she's doing this and that because she's being told by her boss. So the boss wants to, and I know it's been a long time even before she got here, for a year, to wait for a year, year and a half, that's, that's a long time for me to say, "Tomorrow, or we don't know what to do." But now we have the city manager here, maybe, you know, give her a little time to, and maybe we can move forward. I'm not defending Monica, but at the same time, I see what she does, and somebody's gotta give her her job duties in the morning. Go do this, you know, go, go give up. So it's gotta come from the city manager. But, uh, we will work on it and try as best, I mean, I don't think you've been hearing it before.
See, the main thing, if I go to Mrs. Turner, at the same token, Mrs. Turner's got a lot of work to do, so I'm taking, you know, but then if you try, if I go to Mrs. Turner, okay, then we'll be done.
Thank you. I'll thank Olly, I'll let you have your word.
Okay. I wanted this topic forever to continue. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica.
I'll thank Olly, but then, at the same token, the property that I mentioned six months ago, we're, we're at, we've done nothing.
Take the complaint, take the complaint too.
Can you go to the city manager?
Okay, no, I thank her, thank you. I just, I just wanted to answer Ms. Castillo's.
We don't have the power to do that.
No, but I'm, I, I, again, I appreciate it, but I'll ask Mrs. Turner tomorrow or then. I thank you all.
Thank you.
And I say, excuse me, but I'm human. I mean, this has been going on forever.
And that's in control, Mr. Gonzalez.
No, but I must, I apologize.
Maybe you can ask our ex-mayor to go and hold the law for a second.
No, no, he's got a lot of work to do.
I guess wanting somebody to cut his crap for you.
The law works, he can baby wipe you up.
Okay, so now we're gonna go on to item two, the city parking, I'm sorry, ordinance discussion. All right, Mr. Gurrell brought it up a while back, and wanted us to look at our current parking ordinance and how it refers to tractor-trailers and trailers and parking inside the city of Gorgo. We do have a parking ordinance. Mr. Gurrell is looking to update that parking ordinance. So we took the time to come tonight to hand out our parking ordinance to all the council members. And there's also an attachment of three other ordinances from cities around Texas that have ordinances as well, that we can maybe pick and pull some of the wording from. So my hope is that, um, council can look through the packet and give us some ideas of how we're looking to update the code or the ordinance. And at that point, we'll draw up a draft ordinance with that wording in it and bring it back at a later time for a consideration and action item on court parking. What I need some direction on after you read this, because each of the cities have different descriptions and different areas where certain types of vehicles can park. Uh, we don't allow them to park in alleyways, we don't allow them to park in, on city property or street, side streets, that kind of thing. Uh, but we can look at doing, uh, parking for extended periods of time, lengths of trailers, you know, there's all kinds of things that we can add to our current ordinance. So if we can get a little more direction on what we're looking at, I can do some more research on some additional cities if you wish, and we can do.
What cities, similar size?
Uh, we've got, uh, Plano, which is, is a little bit bigger than Marcus, is a local one, and then the third one was San.
A lot of cities have, they're hard to get, you know, you have to look through your files. We can call some other cities and they can.
These had some decent examples of what we're looking at as far as that. So, um, I think bringing this as the first time, I kind of gave some examples, gave a copy of our book, and then we can definitely take some ideas in between now and the next time we bring it up for discussion, be able to write that into a, an ordinance so that we can bring it back as a consideration and action item once we've figured all of those things out.
May I make the recommendation that this go through the Planning and Zoning Committee who's working on the land use plan and zoning ordinances, so that we kind of mirror the language that they're using, and let them come to the council with the recommendation that mirrors what the land use plan and the zoning ordinance plan is, instead of putting a Band-Aid on it, something that may contradict what they're coming forward with, that we're uniform in the language.
Absolutely. What I'll do is make sure that Cindy gets this out to the P and Z members tomorrow, so they can review what I've handed out to y'all, that way everybody's on the same page when questions come up. Uh, and I'll ask that she put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so that they can discuss it as well.
Part of Chris Stewart's brief was to review, you know, parking and loading, and he's done that, and I received the, uh, I received it last week, I haven't reviewed it yet, but I can, um, I think, uh, Ms. Turner has a copy, so send it on today. I doubt she'll have time to look at it, but, um, I can email it to, it's ten pages of, uh.
I have it, I can send it to you. Um, I did, we see that it had a chance to download, we can read it a little bit.
I'd love to read.
It is, but it does pieces of subjects in, but if I did, I did not hear, if the council is, said the Russian was just parking it, was concerned about a certain buyer, what was your issue?
Yeah, I think with this, with this, uh, oil companies in town, and all, there are some, uh, company trucks pulling trailer from the back and parking on the side or in front of, of homes, and they're wearing down the easements. And of course, I had some complaints, especially a gentleman, that was really having a hard time because he parked in front of his house, and, and it's somewhat lower, it's a low, lower level where play, uh, happens, and, and it's, this is causing him more of a problem.
So you concerned with the 18 wheel sort of parking easement in residence area?
Not 18 wheel, they're, they're regular, uh, trucks pulling trailers and pipes or the city gone to, to, to break. No. Right behind the, back of the Catholic church on the side.
And I think when you talk about large trucks, and stuff, a lot of the standard verbiage you see in parking ordinances talks about the number of axles on a trailer, or the overall length of a trailer, that I think can help address this issue. My, my only concern is that we do it in concert with the, the land use plan. And I think from what Mr. Stewart had forwarded to them in the ten pages, uh, Mr. Vipon sent a, immediately reviewed it, and I began to review that, just so long as we're using the same language, I think we'll be able to address the issue. We may already be addressing the issue in our ordinance.
We may be. What is your residential problem? What street did you have a problem with?
Uh, it's, uh, Second, uh, Second Street, right, uh, uh, west of, yeah, west of the Catholic church. Right by the El Masias Church.
We'll see if, if it's not already in violation, if it addresses that, but you have a problem, wanna make sure that it's consistent with what the plan is under working on.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, I, I met with the gentleman, and also the chief policeman out there, and took the old address on. Of course, he wasn't bothering.
Yeah, our current, current ordinance really refers to tractor-trailers, like 18-wheelers, and they're large trailers, and not necessarily a regular truck pulling a pipe trailer or something like that. So that's one of the things we need to look at. The chief did go out there with full council, and they did visit about it, and that's when it prompted us to look at other areas and see what their ordinance is to possibly follow with.
We'll see if we can get that on P and Z, on agenda for residential view, if we have a chance, and we'll see if we can get some to then come back to you on that.
Just so you know, I received these changes last week, and we will be, allow proposals for the P and Z look at, and that will be reviewed on next meeting. Which would be, we come, we say.
Police, Colonel, will you, uh, be able to have the, the city staff go and take a look at the, in front of this, in front of this house, to make sure that it's not causing a problem for, for this gentleman next to you, that, Mr. Gurrell?
Oh, yeah.
Like to be filled in with some base or something?
Definitely. Yeah, we'll have the ordinance there, and we will try to put our mind to it, to chase the issues. We'll see.
You guys to go out to, you're gonna send something to one council, and I'd like to see everything.
I didn't send it to you, I just got it today. So, if you may, I'll go with you. I can send it possibly. I'll, I'll give everybody a couple, I just got it today.
Everybody like yourself.
Bear in mind, there are any proposals not gonna be approved by P and Z.
Okay.
There's no other discussion on that we want?
No, I have one, my, my, your, your top three pages are your current ordinance, and I would just tell you right now, if you dive through Northcrest tonight, tonight, you will find a violation on almost everything in your present ordinance.
And we tell you that they've tried this work in any.
I'm not talking about any particular stuff, I'm just telling you, we tell you, all vehicles are, all vehicles are, here's my only point in bringing it up. We've got a lot on the books that could be enforced, and you can make improvements, count axles, count wheels, count parking places, blah, 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 blah. Problem we're gonna have is, there's no place for a lot of these people that are in the trucking business to be. So you're gonna make it illegal for them to park it from your house, you're gonna have to think about, where are you gonna find a place to park?
They need to run an old school administration.
There needs to be some thought, that's the thing, the council's gonna have to, is there needs to be some thought about where you expect them to park, because we have a lot of people, way before oil and gas got here, they were doing building materials trucks, they're coming with a tractor in the back that unload the truck, park in Northcrest and other areas, and they're in the business trying to make a loop. There's gonna have to be a place for them to put their trucks in. And so there needs to be some friendliness or some accommodations for these kinds of people to make that down the loop. And we don't need to just pick up oil and gas people, because they're bringing us money. All we need to do is figure out a plan, and the parking is part of what we were talking about, for the P and Z, over all planning. Just, just issuing citations and making money on them is not a good solution, we're gonna have a lot of, we have to do.
Good comment. And then go on to two, the D, F E B C Properties Discussion, Mrs. Turner?
Uh, yes. I had an opportunity to meet with F E B C, and I see they left a board meeting, there are some properties that, um, involve the city, um, one of them being the, uh, the Federal Warehouse, which I believe is on the agenda to be spoken about, we get your section, and we need to talk about, um, moving for the rest of the floor on that property, as well as the Hyphen Light Trail, uh, there's some property that we need to donate, as well as transfer ownership of the Hyphen Light Trail to the city itself, because right now, I did confirm with our controller that that property is, is on, um, F E B C's books and not on ours. And I think, at another meeting, I think you heard about the complaint of maintaining that property, and I spoke to them in reference to that. So the F E B C properties, uh, will be part of the executive session discussion.
Just those two? Those two properties, or the what?
I love two, that's all we have.
That is good. I just go on to item three, any new business, consideration action, your first street purchase, the portal, Chamber of Farmers Festival, a live parade, Mr. Vipon and.
Here is. Are you up? Yes. So for those that don't know me, Mr. Roger is, I'm the Vice President of the Chamber. Um, I am heading at the event of the Christmas on the Forum and Festival of Life's Parade. Um, we are looking for it to be a really exciting event this year, um, a little bit of a change from years past. Um, a lot of our local businesses are really coming together to make it a more memorable event, memorable event, especially for our children. Um, just some of the things I'm working on, um, we've got, hopefully, Shamu, that's going to be our, uh, grand marshal for our parade. Um, I think that's huge, a lot of kids are going to be very excited to see those mascots come out from San Antonio to our city, um, so they'll be very excited about that. Our theme for the parade is a mascot's Christmas. So we're very interested in all the businesses with mascots, the surrounding schools, everybody involved in the parade. Uh, one of the biggest complaints last year was our parade, um, route was too short and too small. So, um, if we get the kind of, um, participation that we anticipate, we really wanted to make sure that, um, you know, we had a really good parade route and, um, everything worked out, you know, to where it was very comfortable for everyone, especially the, the riders, um, on the float, um, as well as all the viewers and spectators. So, um, what we are asking, um, the chambers are asking the council to approve some road closures, um, asking to have the roads closed. Um, the highlighted areas, um, with the red arrows is the actual parade route, and we actually only need those closed from about six o'clock to approximately eight thirty, nine o'clock, uh, in the evening, uh, for the parade. Our event starts at two P M. that day. Um, the shaded area, the red shaded area and the highlighted streets, in that shaded area, we would ask that they be closed from at least, um, it's an hour before our event to, um, an hour after our event. So that way, um, we still need to go and get the approval from the courthouse to use their, um, their courtyard and their parking lot for our vendors and all of our activities that we're doing on. Um, but we ask that the roads be closed throughout the day for those activities and vendors, and especially for all the children that are around, that we don't want to have any type of problems. We do also ask, um, if the city could possibly provide some help, uh, from, with the police officers for, uh, directing traffic, and if they would also start a parade, remake a parade, that would be awesome.
What day is that?
This is December seventh, the first Saturday of December.
Is this a new route?
This is a new route, yes. And one of the main reasons why we started the route there, I'm actually gonna, um, plan to have everybody park down Fifth Street, um, to start the parade, and we don't want, um, all the kids to see the floats, we want to kind of keep them hidden until the parade starts. Um, if you see there, we have the possible, um, Santa landing, um, in the works of speaking with the, um, CEO at the Conley Memorial, he's gonna try to get Airlife involved to, um, drop Santa off. He's far enough away where, um, you know, it shouldn't be too much of an issue with the helicopter, but yet close enough where, um, a lot of the spectators can, um, you know, see Santa being dropped off by Airlife, I think that's gonna be a pretty amazing thing for the kids to see. And then also, um, if we do win that, get the mascots that we are asking for, um, we would need, um, access to City Hall to be able to get them in their costumes, to jump on the float, do the route, and then jump back out to get out of their costumes, because they can, they cannot be in their costumes longer than thirty minutes for safety reasons. Um, and, you know, I don't know who else may need, but, uh, anybody else, you know, I'm just worried about the grand marshal, because there are, there are, you know, inviting, we're inviting them and asking them to do that, so we want to make those accommodations for them.
I'm okay. I mean, for anything, the only thing is that Business 181, a lot of people come down to Fourth Street to go to ninety-seven, like, truck drivers, they don't have it to hold up. You're gonna stop the 181, Business 181, uh, crossing, crossing over this way.
To cross the road, yes. Yeah.
We see, you would be a tax law.
Well, yeah.
Because that Fourth Street turns down, it's a little bit long, and that's actually a tax law.
Okay, so if we can move it down, just right here by the convenience store?
Only one.
On board the street?
I was gonna say, Dale Crowe said, "Put peanut crust on it."
TechStop approved it before we closed it. TechStop did that approval, and we approved the others. We, we, it's a partnership, and, um, we could definitely work with you at TechStop, um, saying that, you know, the council approved it on presentation, that TechStop would approve it. They're usually really good about it.
I don't have a problem with that one, because it's highway.
Right.
Well, maybe if you, um, worst case scenario, bring it down one block, um, the starting point, if TechStop doesn't approve it, but if they do approve it, then we can start it.
Because it's a side presented.
It's quicker, it's longer than the block. Can we make the motion subject to TechStop approval? Some motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Very good. Good an answer.
Well, okay, I'm in favor, and the motion by Councilmember, second by Councilmember. Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm, such a.
Okay. Now we're gonna go on to item three, the consideration action, to approve an ordinance for over sixty-five disabled persons. I think if most of us recall, the lifetime, um, the headache, I think, sixty-five and over was to freeze the home state. Um, and there was a problem with that, so we didn't pursue it because we found out at the last minute that we did not have an ordinance at the time. So needless to say, most of our citizens were extremely disappointed and very critical of our order, or lack of follow-up. So this is, we're following up as an adventure in an effort to make up, um, to the citizens of this committee for the next year that were not able to, I'll pitch this year with a freeze. So what, this, Laura has done a lot of research, and she has some, uh, in her three D, um, handout, well, three D for others, but she has several examples of, um, of the, uh, of the amount, different amounts of homes and different values. So what I would like for her to do is go over those and give some explanation.
Yes, thank you.
And then we can make a recommendation, or I would like to make a recommendation.
Basically, you have the, under state of Texas property tax code, you have the ability to offer an exemption for minimum amounts three thousand, you can go up infinitely. And actually, we've, we've got this, this is the Wilson County, the entities that have home state exemptions, and then also did Bear County, because they have a lot more cities. You can see it goes anywhere from ten to fifteen to fifty thousand, some of the, some cities in San Antonio area. The, uh, the, for an exemption, it doesn't matter the value of your home, the exemption is, you can have, as in the table, an eighty-five thousand dollar home or three hundred thousand dollar home, the exemption amount, what you're saving is exactly the same. So currently, we offer five thousand, so that is sixteen dollars on, at the current tax rate, um, for tax savings that's offered, that, if, uh, senior citizens, sixty-five and over, and or people that are disabled and qualified, and there are requirements under the property tax code, if they've applied for it. We currently have about four hundred and, uh, four hundred and forty residents taking the exemption now, so the likelihood that it's gonna change would be if we have people that are, you know, going older, and most of them are taking it at this point. The.
Is there a calculation of, of those four hundred and forty residents, of how much revenue is actually, uh, or is, I guess, four and?
Yeah, you, if, for five thou, we have for the, um, the current five thousand, we're losing approximately seven thousand dollars. It, it's, and you're not really losing it, because the other, the other effect of this is, when the calculation is done, when the, through the taxation, those are taken into account before, and so when, as you go through the chart and go through all the different numbers and calculating your effective rollback rate, um, the actual is spread out over, you do your tax rate. So it's not that you're losing it, but it's, other people are picking up that burden, can't pick up that burden, it's the go for tax.
So this, to the home stater, um, sixty-five and over are disabled, on the savings based on current tax rate of point three two three three, for fifteen thousand, is this their savings, forty-eight dollars and fifty cents? Is that their correct amount?
That's current tax rate.
Okay, so at least it supplements their, um, social security and Medicare, or whatever income they have. So, um, and so to the savings, that means I'm also fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five, and we're looking at the fifteen thousand, is that correct?
That's, that's the way she's explaining it.
I mean, if, if you let the tax rate exactly the same next year, and everything stays constant, then that's where it is, and that's where it's not a conflict. The calculation can change infinitely, new properties going on the back row, so that's as close as you can.
When we said that, um, we couldn't do that for this year, this would be the following tax year that we would be doing this for, would be, I guess, the fourteen, fifteen tax year?
Well, it's, taxes are.
Fifteen, year fifteen?
It's a four, tax year fourteen, but our budget would be fourteen, fifteen.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, I think it's.
So if, if we shifted this fourteen thousand dollars, okay, into the, the, before calculating your, your effective tax rate for your rollback happen, what kind of an impact would fourteen thousand dollars have on our effective tax rate, uh, say, in this year? You know, our effective tax rate was, our roll, uh, we ended up right at three two two three. If we had taken this fourteen thousand dollars and then shifted it the other way, what would it have done to that tax?
It would have gone up slightly, it was, and I did kind of like, put it in, and I'm like, you know, I don't have the, I didn't write that later, but, um, I put it in, it was three two, three two, two, excuse me, three two three seven. So it did go up.
So we would be shifting, shifting point oh 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 set, four cents per hundred dollars to the rest of the taxpayers.
If you wanted to go to those rates, yes.
Right, okay.
Because the, the way the calculation of the effective, effective rate effectively brings you in the same amount of property tax, that's what the calculation does, and then the rollback gives you, uh, eight percent more of the property tax, so that's why it goes up slightly.
Do we have any numbers that, that, that tell us how, this four hundred and forty this year, okay, do we have any trending on, on how that has increased or changed through the years? You know, as our population grows, um, you know, are we growing more in the senior citizen area, or are we growing more in the other area? Do we?
I didn't ask Brian for that information, I have the last few years, and it's been approximately four hundred, four hundred and twenty to four hundred and forty, so, but I don't, I, he might be able to get the information again, it's.
Well, that, that becomes a concern in that if our population is aging, and this was the, the challenge that was brought up in, in doing a, a tax freeze, okay, where in communities where their population was aging, it ended up to be a huge, uh, challenge to the community. I, I'm not opposed to this, I, I, I just would like to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for, uh, forcing the balance of, of this discount on all of the other taxpayers because of, uh, an aging population.
And I believe that, that people, young people are buying homes and all that, so that'll make up, when somebody's sixty-five and over buying a home, it's like, uh, it's like, uh.
And I think. We see, we already see.
Yeah, I think it's important that we give something back to those who sustained this community for such a long time. I mean, I don't think it's always about the dollar, I think it's about what we can do for the community, and for, as Mr. Mario says, is for the people. You know, so having said that, I would like to make the motion that we, um, accept this with a total of fifteen thousand exemption. The regular five thousand plus another ten.
So what you'll do is you need to approve ordinance.
Yes, so these are.
I'm gonna pass on the new, this one was, that one that had a draft had not been approved by the attorney, and it's actually added, but it's exactly the same, just added more.
City manager, council, do you have any confirmation?
Well, actually, yeah, I mean, my comment is that, I think we may, you know, about this wonderful project, I, I wouldn't recommend because of the, obviously, a component that we have to think about and consider, I really do need to have and give back to the community, you know, thousands of dollars, you did it for so long, but the maximum fifteen thousand, uh, as. as we actually, it's obviously may not be explicitly responsible, in my opinion, as we, that look at those numbers and I talk to Laurie, let's do that. Um, that's probably, we can give other options, maybe the ten thousand or the twelve, but the maximum of fifteen may actually affect us long-term going forward, and we have to look at that, as we are charged to, in the, two years to give something reference to non-solvency plan. That's the only motion now.
And I'd like to just answer that, uh, you know, we're talking here about the senior citizen stuff, what was the dollar amount that we're gonna save a year, forty-six dollars?
Forty-four.
Okay, you know, I think we should turn around and pick up the phone and maybe call Lou or, or go spend something. I think we ought to tighten our belt on, on spending money that we shouldn't be spending, and I don't know if it's, if it's okay to, we're, I don't want to interfere with the city manager, but I disagree with the city manager, because I believe that the senior citizens are, and the citizens should get the tax break, but at the same time, we can cut somewhere else instead of just picking up the phone and spending that tax, city tax out. So are we okay if I second the motion?
We're okay if you second the motion, the only point, we talked about this before, is you can adjust this annually, that's the big point about what we're doing.
If this one is, you're not...
Yes, we can adjust this going forward, but the freeze, we would not be able to adjust, that's a large thing.
This you can adjust.
So that's the benefit.
So we can always come back, okay, I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, I'm Councilor Castillo, second by Councilor Morenoz.
I, I think, I think there should be the, a median there to see how this trend goes, you know, as, for, for this, for this year, you know, to, to say, if we raise it up to, you know, the ten thousand, rather than the full fifteen, and see how, how the trend goes and see where...
We're putting it for this year, we're talking about...
This is for next year.
Yeah, but we also gotta answer the question, what we're gonna do with, you know, if we're gonna spend ten thousand or seven thousand dollars, as Mario said, where are we gonna cut the expense? Uh, I think we have to answer that question, and if we can say, okay, we're gonna cut seven thousand dollars here or fourteen thousand dollars here, then we can make that change, but we can't arbitrarily say, hey, we're gonna, cut by fourteen thousand dollars and not have identified that. And I, I'm, again, I'm not opposed to doing this, but I'm concerned that we, we, we make a decision that we're gonna reduce our revenue by this point, but we haven't identified where we're gonna reduce our expenses.
For the fourteen thousand, you, you don't believe that we can make it up, the fourteen thousand, by somebody buying a new home and, or...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to see how, how the, we, yeah, but we've got, we've also a new budget.
We would have to wait another year, we'd be putting this off forever. Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second.
Discussion. I recommend you perceive it as two projects, one, with a direction by an amended motion to the, uh, controller, but she asked her team where the offset comes from, and we're gonna see you next meeting. Number two, on the...
You have time to think, switch it around, whoever.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if you see that, if I have, where you wanna make the judgment.
The, the calculation...
Are we on people?
Make it on, make it whatever you're gonna do. But, but the other thing is, I think it's important to, to actually look at the demographics of for next year, and kind of know where you're, you're skewing this thing when you get around to doing this next year. I think the point is well made, we need to look at the demographics coming from.
I, I, that's what I'm interested in seeing, is just that the trend does, to see what it, what it does to us, you know, financially. It, it, of course, it's still gonna be a benefit, but, you know, we still need to see where it's gonna go.
I mean, while I'm suggesting if this is an experiment this year, you make the appropriate adjustments, with that recommendation, I say, perceive the motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Do you do amend the motion, or...
No.
No, we're not amending the motion.
Well, you could amend it with the direction from law. We're not making...
May I, May I?
So, I...
Hi. All of the votes?
Hi.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to three C, consideration in action, sheriff of draft ordinance requiring that all contracts and to be perpetuated or liquidated, should be made, should the city of Fort Smith and any other entity be reduced to one, that all such contracts contain adequate and defined consideration, that all contracts above a defined dollar threshold be brought before city council for approval and establishing a number of dates. Mr. Morenoz.
All right, Mayor, this is, got a lot of heads to this issue, uh, one of them's kind of illustrated by the same presentation tonight, where there's an indication that there's a death owed, uh, and I'm not saying it's owed or not owed, I'm, I'm not informed enough, but what this is an attempt to do is two things. One is, between our agencies, is to eliminate handshakes. We can greet each other, pat each other on the back, we can give each other a membrage, but no contracts by handshake. Okay, it's an effort to say that all agreements between will be in council, or A and council, or anybody, be in written form.
Paper trail.
Sure?
Paper trail.
A paper trail, okay. The second part of this is, and I called the manager, or the manager called me, I don't remember which way, is we suggested, and I want a language in the document that's passed tonight, that's slightly different from what you got in your packet, and that was in paragraph three, under the now therefore being resolved, it reads, and let me just read it so everybody can hear it, "In the interest of responsible government and city planning all agreements creating an obligation of the city of Fort Smith, in excess of ten thousand, whether in direct monetary terms or value specifically described as a pool of property, service, or product, or some particularly described monetary value, shall be presented to the city council for consideration and action prior to the city entering into any such agreement. Lesser amounts may be approved by ready agreement, memorandum, which be executed by the city manager in her official capacity pursuant to the policy ordinance." And what I was trying to do was establish a threshold between what the council can do on its own and what the manager can do on her own, and if you don't like ten thousand, and you wanna cut it to twenty thousand, or you wanna cut it to five thousand, you can do it, but I'm just trying to get some threshold that we know, if we look at a document, under that figure, there should be a place for the city manager's approval, if it's above that figure, there should be a place for the city council's approval, but nothing gets approved hopefully after the presentation tonight, where somebody comes down the hallway and says, remember that handshake deal we had about saving that road, or building that sewer line, or whatever. And this is just simply an attempt to get everything that we do in writing, so where you are, Laura has an audible trail, our auditor has an audible trail, uh, we have it all pinned out.
Um, Mrs. Mayor, um, go ahead.
Where are you starting?
Mrs. Mayor, um, I have a real problem with this one, um, because first of all, in our, um, section twelve, point oh one, that new construction projects over twenty-five entered into by the city of Fort Smith and Fort Smith Corporation, the city must be competitively given, we already know that those are going to be on paper, those are contracts, they're agreements, or what we don't wanna do is get into having paper trails, paperwork, and having to have the council approve all of this, I mean, especially work orders and, uh, agreements at the center, I mean, do you realize how long it's gonna take and the, your occupancy that it, that it's gonna make, and having to send these to the attorney, to the city? I mean, that's why we have a city manager to approve these. I think that the charter, the way it's written stands for itself, for these twenty-five thousand and over, and we're just adding more paperwork and more work and more legal fees, that's where we can say, well, legal fees, as a matter of fact.
But what if, but what if the, the FEDC, who themselves have an agreement that it doesn't get to her?
No, we can make it a limit to where it gets to her, and she, and she has that opportunity to say, okay, is it...
If it's in the budget, it's a done deal, if it's not in the budget, then the council has to approve it.
Now, does this have to do with links to, as, specific contracts, or, or can this just be sale, a purchase? I mean, 'cause, 'cause it could be, I mean, we just approved the, the interim city manager to make purchase of, of over ten thousand dollars, I think it's close to fifteen thousand dollars, just to make a repair on a, on a rental loan.
He, he, he didn't have to, he didn't have to come...
He had the authority.
He had the authority all along, but I think when he was sitting there as a tip or, and, they kind of didn't want him to make that decision, so he's... She has a decision, anything under twenty-five thousand, residue.
I think that's what we're, we're doing here, if we put that figure at twenty-five thousand dollars, this is simply saying, EDC, if you're gonna come to the city and you want us to put in sewer lines for you, then we have a paper trail, and we're giving the city manager the authority to have a contract, so that we don't end up, like happened on the, the McCoy's deal, where here's sixty thousand dollars in materials that they said, we said, but there was no written contract on this one. We don't have deals like, hey, the city employees are putting in a sewer line for this piece over at, at the veterans park, and that, well, the handshake deal was they were gonna pay for everything, but then afterwards, they said, well, no, we weren't gonna pay for the labor, that was the city's part of it. We end up with a, a, a document that doesn't, and it doesn't matter what the dollar figure, you could say, city manager, if it's under a million dollars, you can approve it, the city charter says twenty-five thousand dollars, that's an appropriate number, I'm okay with that. Alls we're doing is making sure there are no, of, no more of these handshake deals between organizations and say, city's gonna do this, and they're gonna do this, and then when they did turn out exactly the way they wanted it, they said, oh, no, no, we didn't say that. We now have a way of coming back to them and saying, no, here's the agreement, we said we were gonna do this, you said you were gonna do this, it was appropriately executed by the city manager. It's a good way of doing business.
I think that's what I think is important here, that's it, yeah.
There wasn't agreement with McCoy's and the city and the FEDC, but unfortunately, that piece was silent, and so when I first got here, it was, I was told, it was accidentally that piece, they did say, it was still said we were in the street, there was a good agreement, and it was, went through Lou's office. Just make, make sure everybody understands, there was an agreement between three entities, but there was not the piece of who's gonna pay for the materials got left out.
Now, this ten thousand dollars that you came up with, is just an arbitrary number? Uh, okay.
The ordinance says that all contracts may be through the city of Fort Smith and entity be in writing, all of them, do you realize how many that is?
Yeah, I do, I don't think there's anything on there, but...
I mean, that, we are going to...
If you're in business, if you're in business, you gotta have a paper trail.
No, 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 it gives a paper trail, a paper trail's fine, but the, the amount of money that's put in ten thousand or a month, you can't do that, I mean, you, we can, we go on, but there is already an amount, when, when a big contract comes, over thirty, over twenty-five thousand, it comes to the city contract.
Well, this does not change that, all this is, what you have to do is if you...
So why don't we use all this wording about, uh, uh, an amount and, and all this stuff, if, if this whole motion would be a paper trail from each entity, we're fine.
Well, we're in power.
But, but deep wording here, I don't say that with dignity.
We have empowered our city manager and all of the department heads to make those decisions. Why do we wanna do it? Why do we wanna approve all the contracts at the center? Why do we wanna do that, that are under...
I'm not suggesting you approve the contracts, well, inside of it is prohibit the non-contracts.
I know, but that's not the way the ordinance reads. There's two different parts, it says, and required that all contracts made between the city of Fort Smith and entity be in writing, and that's...
Well, don't you want that?
All of them, even those that say, that are written in writing?
But it's a contract, what we'll find was writing it to each other, but if it's gotta go to you to review it...
I'm not asking for it to come to me.
Well, but they don't wanna make, they don't, get that phone, Lou, can you check that and make sure it's right? That's what, we, we don't need to have a hundred contracts given to you and...
I'm trying to plug a hole, if you don't sense that I'm plugging a hole...
Well, I make a motion to table this item until we get further information.
I have a motion to table.
What's a, what, what are we trying to, what are we trying to...
We need to, we need to work this a little bit, uh...
Is that, is that his change, is that his change, and why is it...
Yeah, so, just, just do it amongst FEDC, and say, okay, FEDC, you want this done, write it down, return it, well, we gotta work with her here. Go ahead.
Well, you're, you're just putting a, a, an ordinance on, it's gonna, it's gonna contradict the charter.
If, if, if the FEDC gives her a paper saying, I need three man, three pipes, three S, three, she looks at it, say, okay, why are we here to do this? We can do it.
Well, what I'm saying, is this ordinance gonna contradict the charter?
But still, that's a paper trail.
No, I want a paper trail, I'm gonna get the paper trail.
But that is a contract, that's a contract between the EDC and the city manager.
All right, that's a, a...
Is, but is it, is this ordinance gonna contradict the charter?
No.
I want more information, and I don't, I don't understand it, I wanna make sure what I want.
Table it, I'm trying to plug a hole because I sent...
And we can still, and we can still tell the FEDC, you want this done, write it down, give it to Ms. Turner, write it, write her a little signature, and we'll, we'll do it, we're already done.
For example, the Boys and Girls Club contract, they pay five hundred dollars a year, and yet we have to have it a tiny approved it, and that's okay, their attorney approved it, so I'm sorry.
I'm not asking for any legal to be involved, you keep saying, I have thoroughly involved, I'm trying to set you a standard procedure so you don't have me involved.
Did, did a procedure placed, have they, have they followed it?
No, legal, you said, you mentioned that there was a, a, hey, you're trying to plug a hole, what hole is that?
Okay, on the apartment side here, part of the deal out there was, there was a pledge promised that we were gonna provide on-site swimming facilities.
Okay, now, is that, is that an, uh, an issue that needs to go through an ordinance, or is that an issue that, that should have been taken care of with the previous city manager?
It's both.
So, so, so the, so the, so the hole wasn't with the ordinance, it's just with the procedure that it didn't get followed in the first place?
But then that was an FEDC thing, it was a...
That was an FEDC thing.
But it, well, yes, it was, and the, the FEDC guaranteed verbally or otherwise that the city would provide adequate stuff in. What this ordinance does is say, no, there's no such agreement, unless it's a little piece of paper in writing signed by the city and the EDC, which is, oh, by the way, a contract, whether it's legally reviewed or not, that's the agreement. Alls we're saying is we're not gonna do any verbal agreements, it's all gonna be in writing.
So, so the FEDC would come and tell Mrs. Turner, Ms. Turner, we're gonna do this, and this is the paper, what's it gonna do, say...
And that's the contract, that's what this ordinance is saying.
And the paper's there, but when they say, Ms. Turner, did you let FEDC do that? Yes, sir, I have it right here, that's all we need, a paper trail.
That's what we're asking on this ordinance.
I think they're gonna ask you for two hundred.
This says that it should be brought before the city council.
No, above a certain dollar figure, above a certain dollar figure.
Well, I, I...
To where we all understand.
I'm not sure that we need it at all, I mean, I think we're attacking the wrong thing, I mean, we're in the wrong field here.
It's already in place.
Are, exactly, are, are we just redoing the...
Somebody did, somebody did take my note for that.
Table it and save some time with that.
Just asking a question, are, are, are we redoing the, the...
I have a motion to table this signed by the Council Morenoz, I have a second by Councilor Castillo. I'm in favor.
Hi.
Hi. I need to get more, I understand.
It's gonna come back to council, we're gonna be in the same scenario.
You know, we're a little bit better than what's...
Who's opposed?
I oppose that.
Well, 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 we're in a hurry, we can't wait, put it for the...
Madam Mayor, what was the vote? Madam Mayor, what was the vote? I heard two ayes, I didn't know that.
You're gonna read it, Paul.
Please, let's move on to motion carries.
Table. Thank you.
I think you're in a place. Now, we're gonna go on to, I have a four point two D, review and affirmation modified of restriets made in March twenty eighteen thirteen concerning master conferences and directions to the attorney, concerning contact and use of counsel, including threat notification or to the executive session. Do I have a motion for an executive session? Yes, uh, I don't know, y'all wanna discuss it on the...
I make the motion to go into executive session.
And I also wanna add a trick, sorry, just, just for you to join us, just to make sure what's going on.
So can I, uh, get a vote to alter the executive session, I have a second one?
I make the motion to...
Do you have a motion by councilor?
I'm, I'm...
I'm glad it's...
That's it.
Mayor. I have a, you said 4A, and it's 3D.
3D, 4A, and 4B.
Let me read them, okay? Okay. The second is gonna be compared to executive session, according to the government code 551.471, to receive update from city attorney and pending litigation in reference to the Nevada VS versus small city of Coorsville case, SISI versus city of Coorsville, and any other threatened litigation. And in 4B, consideration, considering the executive session for specific text, the government code, section 551, 472, to receive update on proposed property sale of the FEDC beer warehouse, including that owned by the city of Coorsville. Do I have a motion, I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Castillo, all in favor?
All right. Will the citizens step outside, please, and talk to you? Councilor going to executive session, please. That doesn't include you, you-